6:30. I'd like to call this meeting of the Willets City Council August 19th to order. We'll start with that pledge. Randy Dalton, would you like to lead us in the pledge allegiance ceremony? Right here.
I am the leader of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with no end, just for...
Thank you. All right, Dolores, may we have a roll call?
Councilmember Strong, Mayor Rodriguez?
Present.
Stransky?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Present.
Mayor Hudson? Yes, thank you. We'll start out with public communications. The city welcomes participation in meetings. Comments should be limited to three minutes per person, but everyone has an opportunity to address the council. To expedite matters, avoid repetition, and there is a person wishing to address the council on the same subject matter, they request to appoint a spokesperson. This item is limited to matters under the jurisdiction of the city council, not on the posted agenda. Public criticism of the council, commission, boards, and agencies will not be prohibited. The city council will take no action on non-agendized items. Is there anyone here this evening who would like to speak to the council on a non-agendized item? Randy, please come to the podium and state your name.
Thank you. It's going to be hard for me to limit it to three minutes.
Don't worry, Dolores has a timer. She will let you know when your three minutes are up.
I could write a book. I've been preparing for this for all I can. I got informed this morning by my neighbor across the road that they're proposing to cut down a 200-year-old black walnut tree that is in my neighborhood. I've lived there for 12 years, and it's an heirloom sacred site as far as I'm concerned. I was hoping that Sherwood Tribe, somebody would be here tonight to speak on behalf of the Sherwood people, because I see a rainbow in times. When I look at this empty field, it's one of the last... I live on Monroe Street, which is perpendicular to Mariposa Market, one-half block, right next door to Roundtree Glass. It's on the southeast side of the Roundtree Glass. There's a... there's Tinko's Mother's House. It goes from Monroe to Alameda. An empty lot across the street is about a half acre, quarter acre, half acre. And there's an old oak tree, an apple tree snagged that has golden apples, and this big... I mean, big, black walnut tree. I think it's at least 200 years old. And it's got... it used to have squirrels. They've been trying to cut it down little by little, and I always get in their way. I mean, I'm getting to go to jail for it. We can't just... Pete Genie wants to put in a electric light pole, a light pole. The man that had the house, lived there, died about a year ago. See, I'm recovering. It was his mom and pop's house. They built it. It's built in 1847, 1947, same year as my house. And I have written a poem called "You See an Empty Lot." Well, I see a symphony of prose, two deer that come up from the Broadest Creek, deet the apples. There are rabbits, there's a piggly rabbit, and there's a long-tailed rabbit. There's squirrels. It's a dog, a walk place. Our street is very tranquil. Come just to the neighborhood. We have walkers. We have people that push the babies in carriages. We have bicycles. We have surf, you know, like, not surfers, but scooters, the guys that...
Skateboarders.
Skateboarders. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Yesterday, I'm with Soho for five years of light and build. And I'm kind of a... it's hard for me to get out, but I am doing it, and I wrote. I know I can't get all this down in one page. I mean, it might be that some other... I wrote, "black tree, black walnut," climate change, "this urban rural airway," "underground water aquifer will be impacted significantly because the roots are in the big underground." And we had an earthquake about a month or two ago. My pipes broke in my house. I had hot, steaming water, $400 water bill. My electric bill is over $1,700. All I have is me and the radio. That's it. I have no TV. I have no computer. So there's some infrastructure that is in need of repairs. I feel like Point, Michigan, where you've got the city places being repaired. Okay, biodiversity, medicine tree, athlete's foot. We can eat the blackberries.
Randy?
We can eat the black walnut. I'd like to have you...
Randy?
Share these notes. Okay, I wrote them down. And I also got Walk the Green Path. I'd like to see it connected with the Rails to Trails. I'd like to see an urban forest.
Three minutes is up.
Okay.
But I encourage you to come back two weeks from now, and you can continue this, and we will be happy to...
Okay, well, I'd like to propose that we get a cease and desist, that tree not be cut down until further study is made, and that if we can get the truth of ordinance, that it's been proposed for forestry, urban forestry.
Randy?
Okay.
You're exceeding your time. Thank you.
But I'd like you to come here to check out my notes. There's much more that can be said and should be said. Don't cut that walnut tree.
Thank you so much. We do appreciate hearing from you, and I expect it to be two weeks from now. Is there anyone else here tonight who would like to speak to the council on a non-agendized item? Okay, thank you very much. We'll move on to public matters. We have none presented this evening. We also have no ordinances to enact, so we will move on to the consent calendar. The city council considers matters listed on the consent calendar as routine. The council will take action with a single motion and roll call vote. A council member may request the removal of an item from the consent calendar for separate discussion and subsequent action. The only item on our calendar tonight is the city council meetings from July 26, 2023. Does any council member have comments about the city council minutes? Nope? Does anyone from the public have any comments on the city council meetings from July 26?
Can you summarize any of your contributions to the public room that this meeting was about?
The minutes are available. It was just a regular city council meeting, and the minutes in full are listed in the packet, which is listed on the city's website and is also available to any who ask for an email.
Can you summarize just briefly tonight right here?
There are quite a few items on the minutes from last time around. The biggest discussion was the proposed rate increase for water in sewer. There was a lengthy discussion here in council chambers, and the council voted unanimously to approve the rate increase. That's my assessment of the meeting. Has anyone else anything to add? Okay. So those are the minutes that are up for approval tonight. If there are no further comments from the public, I'll bring it up here for a motion. Everyone good?
Make a motion to approve.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Dolores, may we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Strong?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mayor Hudson?
Yes, thank you. All right, we'll move on to the monthly activity reports included in the packet. These are items that do not require action by the council but are of public interest. We have a business license activity report from both June and July of this year, as well as a building permit activity report from July of 2023. These items again are available on the city's website as well as in the packet. Anybody who would like a packet may be added to the city's email list, and you'll receive the packet every two weeks prior to the meeting.
I just mentioned also that it's always available at the City Hall information desk.
In paper copy?
On the paper copy.
Thank you much. All right, we have no commission agency and authority items this evening, so we'll move on to item eight, the city manager's reports and recommendations. The first item is a review of the city council proposal from terrain, landscape, architecture to compose a master plan for the East Commercial Street Corridor. Brian?
Hey, thank you, Madam Mayor, Council. What is under your consideration for tonight?
May I interrupt you? Should I be stepping out? Are we taking action this evening?
I'm sorry.
It's in East Commercial Street.
I'm glad you asked. I know you have real property in that corridor, but the decision tonight is not to award a contract, not to award the beginning of a project, the actual work on the street. It's only to award a contract for a master plan. And so the action that's being taken is simply that, to award or not award a contract to a landscape architect to develop a master plan that will be brought back to the city for consideration. We don't know how that plan will affect your property because we haven't seen the plan yet. But so there's no... I don't think it's reasonably foreseeable that approval of this contract to develop a master plan will have a reasonably foreseeable financial effect upon you because it's not to do the work, it's just to do the plan.
Okay. Just want to make sure. Thank you.
And just to add on to that, the plan does not designate or focus on the property that council member Rodriguez is describing that she owns. It is looking at every property that fronts East Commercial from the end section of Main Street to the city limits.
Okay.
So with that item addressed, what we're looking at here tonight is a proposal that was presented by Terrain Landscape Architects. They are the firm that the city retained to do the first phase of the East Commercial Street Corridor, and that was a programming effort that was looking at inventorying the conditions that we have, looking at opportunities, looking at where the infrastructure fails, the public realm, pedestrian facilities, opportunities to improve the connectivity of the various public facilities that are lining that corridor. We have city parks. We have Roots of Power, which attracts a lot of residents or guests to the community. We have the library, the museum. We have a community college campus. We have several other commercial facilities. We have our facility here. And then as you get to the end at Main Street, we have Commercial and Theater, and we have other items. It's kind of a random selection, but this effort is to start tying, connecting them through design language, is easier said than done.
Easier said than done.
Yeah. Hopefully, the plan is a lot easier. So the big item that was identified in this scoping session was to identify nodes within the planning process, the ball fields, the public facilities, this complex, the parks, and also how do we tie that together? So that's what this plan is looking to do. It is basically a extension of an effort or a recommendation that the city council has presented to staff through your goal-setting sessions and saying, how can we improve the built environment? How can we improve the aesthetics and the functionality of city parks and city facilities and also attract more visitors to our community? And that's one of the items that we have, since the East Commercial Street Corridor has tractions for visitors and also for the residents as well that we want to improve their experience of.
Okay. Larry, did you have a question?
So question on the first phase of this, I think we... did we have a grant for the first phase of this?
No, there was no grant associated with this. This was funded through the bulk water cells, which once again, the park well, the non-potable water usage. A year or two ago, we were seeing high revenue of that. We were seeing it a little bit low, or it's more normal now, but with some of the recent construction activities that is in the region and the area, we're hoping that we see a little bit more uptake on that. There is a proposal that is mirroring this effort and the first phase, where we're looking at a grant opportunity, a federal grant opportunity, to implement some of the recommendations already.
So this could help us in that grant process?
Yes, yes. We're using the recommendations and the community engagement effort that was designated or completed in that program, folding that into the grant application.
Do any of the council members have questions? Brian? I'll open it up to the public. Does anyone from the public have any comments regarding the possible acceptance of a proposal to compose a master plan for the East Commercial Street Corridor? Yes, please come to the podium and state your name for the record.
Ragda Zakaria, 226 School Street. I would like to find out because how does this proposal ties with the Blue Zone presentation that we had last week? Because is that connected? Is that a buildup to the recommendation? Because there is nothing worse than duplicating efforts. Because what I lacked in Blue Zone presentation, they already have maps and plans of a tested product that they have done in other cities that include the benches and the streets because we did take a walk on School Street, and we kind of pointed out like what needs to be done. So I just want to make sure like whoever we're hiring to do the plan, we can merge it with the Blue Zone programs that is tested product, and all we have to do through the city planner, forgot her name, is to modify a few lines to have the plan. So I'm just asking how those ties together or they're separate project?
Brian, would you like to answer?
Yes, and actually, you do raise a good point. One of the exhibits that was used during the Complete Streets workshop, and that's what is being referred to, was concepts that were delineated in the Phase 1. So we actually took recommendations that were completed by Terrain Landscape Architects for the city and presented them during the Complete Streets workshop, and they received favorable comments from both Blue Zones and the participants at the workshop. So yes, there is merit there. We're going to take those items that were recommended and hopefully refine them in this Phase 2, and then chase after grant opportunities to implement them.
So can I say something just to clarify? So this is a city project to enhance our street here, our East Commercial Street Corridor. What Blue Zones is putting forward is to help the city create a Complete Streets ordinance, and that's a policy that the city would adopt so that any future planning would pay attention to Complete Streets ideas. It wouldn't be just for... any kind of project would not be just for vehicles. It would be for multimodal users, so pedestrians, cyclists, all kinds of folks.
Correct.
Right? So they're two separate projects, but definitely linked. And as Brian said, Blue Zones did weigh in on this proposal that was based on community forum that the city hosted a couple months back.
Yeah.
And community info.
Okay. Just want to make sure. And Madge has something to add.
Well, I just, I'm assuming that with this next step here, we're taking those conceptual ideas, which included what was brought up, the Complete Streets workshop, and essentially getting to the point where there's a shovel-ready project or several projects that could then be sought for grants to implement. Is that correct?
Correct.
It'd be actually a little beyond just a concept.
Phase 1 was broad strokes.
Yeah.
Now we're going in and looking at the detailed work, you know, looking at, you know, actual sites. How can we take the area where the museum and the library is and refine that and make it more of a designation, a node? How can we connect that to the parks? Either we can do that through fixed improvements, pedestrian elements, or signage or design elements.
A combination.
All.
But essentially, it takes the concept and makes it essentially a very defined project that could start being costumed out and implemented.
Yeah, and like I said, the key areas were identified for their strength and what they add to the corridor and the community. Now, what we like to do is take them and actually blow them up or expand their scale of interest and saying, okay, if we improve their sidewalk availability, their facades, landscaping, lighting, and then how do we tie that to the next phase, you know, one block down? That's what we're looking to do.
Great, thank you. Is there anybody else from the public? Yes, Randy, please come to the podium.
My name is Randy Dalton. I live on Monroe Street. I'm concerned about Rails to Trails, about does this connect and interconnect with an overall transportation plan for our region, for our area, north to south, east to west? Where I live, the emergency access or e-res in case of flooding, you know, these are areas, you know, that need to be addressed at some point. I have a map here that was made, City Willows 2021 Dig Up Pavement Preservation Project. And the map, to me, it has no street names. They have all the maps. It has the different plans for projects, but there was no... it's a poorly made map in my estimation. Whoever, if you're paying $170,000 for a map, the streets need to be named, you know, and I think that these, if you... there's no sense in duplicating, and I would like to see neighborhoods involved. I would like to not to be a top-down. I'd like to be able to see people within the communities that are going to be impacted. Some kind of overall... I go to church on Mill Creek, up at the end, the west end of Commercial. There are creeks. I'd like to see a map of the creeks of this region, this area, you know, the tributaries of the salmon-bearing, you know, we are a still salmon region. I was very active with the South Fork of the Eel River up in Cotto, friends of Cotto Creek and Ten Mile Creek. And Walnut Creek and the San Francisco area, we set up a $1 for every thousand assessed valuation. R-7 and R-8 Parks District. I never missed a meeting for five years. My husband graduated from Berkeley in Conservation of Natural Resources and Land Use Planning. These areas do overlap, and if you're planning today for the future, for our legacy of what are we going to have to give to our children, is our land going to be habitable? Is it going to be breathable? If we asphalt and pave, you know, where's the edible landscape, the projects? There's supposed to be an urban forestry program that I read about that's being proposed for gardens in the schools. I'd like to see an active participation by citizens, not just the architects and not just the planners, but also citizenry. How to make the bicycle paths inequested. Where I live, that field across the street, people don't know this, that's where the horses go after the parade for the frontiers day to load and unload their horses. Okay, that's a very minor detail, but the people that are doing the horseback riding, no, they need to have open space, this field up here on the east part of Commercial, on the west part, just like they're on the corner. A lot of horse people there. I'm a horse woman, too, my kids are. So I just think that there needs to be coordination, there needs to be public participation, workshops.
Thank you, Randy. We did host, the city did host a public forum. We had very good turnout. So that has been addressed.
It will need to be continued.
Definitely. It's always a part of our planning here at the city. Is there anyone else from the public who would like to comment or ask questions about this East Commercial Corridor?
Can you ask my question? It's connected to the Rails to Trails.
Those are separate projects, but because the rail does run right through East Commercial, there will be an opportunity for enhanced signage and was it called place finding?
Wayfinding.
Wayfinding, so that any users of our East Commercial Street Corridor will clearly see the entrance to our new imminent rail trail. Does that answer your question?
Not really because I see coordination. Where are the rails going?
Well, they're two separate projects.
Well, they're all connected. So the first lobby college, as you all face, are interconnected.
Thank you. All right, so with no further comments or questions from the public, I'm going to bring it back up to the dais. And if council has no further questions, I will entertain a motion.
All right, I'll move this up recommendation.
Okay.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion and a second to accept the proposal by Terrain Landscape Architecture and Professional Services to compose a master plan for our East Commercial Street Corridor. Dolores, may we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Strong?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mayor Hudson?
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Item 8B. Let me just change my screen here. What we're looking at here is an item that has been briefed to the council, both in budgetary sessions as well as goal-setting. It has a large price tag, and it's maybe not the most catchiest headlines that we're going to be spending this money on. It's behind the scenes, it supports our operations, it's IT upgrades. A little over a year ago, or about a year and a half ago, we received word from the county that they were going to cease providing IT managed support for the city. Once we realized what was happening, we put an effort out, we retained a professional consultant to provide the service, Apex Technology, as part of their service, not only managing the DOA operations of everyone's desktop and the servers and the connectivity within the organization, they were also tasked at looking at the long-range resiliency and commitment of our system, the strength of it. And they realized, whoa, we're a deficit. There was a deficit of investment in our system for a number of years. We were operating a, not the most secure system, which could have been subject to external threats. And we have neighboring communities that have experienced external threats and actually had damaged them. So this is a system which they put together, which basically has three large items in this one phase, and it is the relocation of our IT components from City Hall to a secure system or a secured location over at the Justice Center. And with that, it's the consolidation of several servers, racks, switches, and cabling. And then the second phase in that sub, you know, as a sub-phase, is the actual, to provide a resilient, dedicated line of service, internet service to both where we have the Public Works yard as well as the wastewater treatment facility. Because right now, it's based on the microwave radio frequency, which is subject to weather conditions and trees and the solar phases of the sun and everything else like that. It goes down every once in a while. And then the last component is tying everything together. A lot of wiring, a lot of cabling, a lot of tying everything together to ensure that the system is resilient and has duplication throughout.
Do the council members have any questions on this item?
Just a couple, right? I guess budget-wise, again, I'm looking at Manny here, it'll be broken down, I guess, we have an IT department, so to speak, budgetarily, right? And then it'll be broken down by each department's use. Is that how this is going to be?
Yes, yes. And right now, it's actually going to be utilized. The original dollars is going to be part of our budget, if I remember correctly.
Yes.
So that way, it's not penalizing any of the other departments, I think, but ongoing costs, ongoing expenses that will be distributed by departments, so they'll be spread across the board of directors.
All right, my next question is, I saw TJ Communications. Is that a subcontractor of Apex? Is that...
That is, that, one of the hangups in this whole process was securing a cabling contractor that had competency and willing to commit to the project. We were looking at several within the area, within the area from Santa Rosa to Ucaia. Everyone essentially either came in too high of a bid, couldn't make a commitment, or Apex recognized their work in public quality, the work was not where we needed to be. So this contractor is one that Apex has a legacy with. They have worked with other projects. They're confident. They're based out of Northern California up by, well, no, it's, they're using a local operation, but Apex, based out of Redding, has used them up in that area as well. They have a connection here, and that's why they say, yes, we have a scheduled window that we can accommodate your project.
Okay. That was my question.
Yes.
Any other council members have questions or comments? Okay, open it up to the public. Has anyone any questions or comments regarding this item, which is, for us, which is Phase 3 of the project to upgrade and support our internet technology for the city of Willets to the tune of $181,000? Anybody out there have any questions or comments? Okay, hearing none, I'll bring it back up to the dais.
I'd just like to comment that although we appear maybe a little bit quieter this evening, I think it's just important for the public to know that we generally have had plenty of time to find out about this information, digest it, ask questions, so we're not making uninformed decisions, even though we are quiet, we're well-prepared for tonight unless we hear something from the public that makes us question what we might be thinking, we're generally ready to... I think that's just important because sometimes there's a perception that we're asleep.
We're just barreling through.
That we're just asleep, but we're not asleep.
Thank you. That's a good comment, and it's also worth pointing out that this is Phase 3 of the upgrading of the internet technology system for the city. So this is something that has been in process for a couple of years now, and here we are. So, thank you. And I'll make the motion. Thank you very much. As stated in the agenda.
All right.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Councilmember Strong?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Stransky? Stransky?
Yes.
Gonzales?
Yes.
Merriman?
Yes, thank you very much. Thank you, Manny. All right, Brian.
8C.
Could we hold off on C? They're at the field and they'll be here shortly. They had mentioned that they were coming tonight and they were going to do their best to be here at 7:00. They might just be running a few minutes late.
Who's they?
Is this the? Some individuals from the promo track?
Okay.
They would like to be here with this item. They mentioned it. Would you mind holding off a little?
Brian, do you have other items that you can?
I have three quick items I can mention pretty quickly, and then we can go into a regular item and then come back to this.
If you would mind.
No, that's fine.
No, they want to be present.
Yeah, it's good to have public.
Okay. Yes, especially for that item. First item is for information purposes, tagging on to the reference that we made just recently, and thank you, council, for approving our IT project upgrades. Another long planned improvement is the roof in this building. Like, you have approved the project, we're moving forward, and I just want to put a notice out there that between essentially the 14th of this month to September 15th, the construction crew for the roof phase will be present at this facility. They're going to be working around the parking lots, going to have certain areas closed. It really impacts where staff parks, and I asked Davy Bowles there for an update. And basically, the big thing he noted here is no interruptions to public parking or public entrances during construction. Say that cautiously, there may be an opportunity where, or a situation where we had to close the entranceway or direct people the other, to another door, another exit, exit out of the building. So just be forewarned, we're going to go through a little bit of some difficulties and some redirecting people in and out of the building for about a month, but it's for a good cause. So if there's any concerns, if there's construction updates or changes to the schedule, we will put notices on the Facebook website and on the building. So that's that. Another item, I believe the council has made aware of it, notice, or a flyer was just produced and presented to staff this afternoon, is associated with the Caltrans Lane Diet Project for South Main Street. I strongly encourage council members to attend, and that is next Tuesday at the Fire Hall, 6:00 p.m. They, Gay, and help me out. Does the, Caltrans is going to have representatives at the 23rd council meeting as well as a follow-up?
Yeah, so, so staff was presented with some conceptual plans last Monday and had a coordination meeting with Caltrans and quickly worked with Caltrans to set up the public forum meeting at the firehouse with our city manager just mentioned. And then what we've asked and requested of Caltrans and do expect to occur is to follow up that public forum on the 16th and have Caltrans present to the city council at the August 23rd meeting, correct?
We're coordinating with the Chamber of Commerce, they're going to do basically a media blast to all their, as many of the attendee, or, excuse me, they're going to try to get as many of the business owners, property owners on that South Main Street corridor, a notice to them and encourage them to attend or contact Caltrans or the city staff if they have questions. So we're trying to do a direct notification and, let's see how it goes.
What time?
6:00 p.m.
6:00 p.m.
6:00 p.m. Is that, is that ongoing? Is it a one-time, you come down, sit down, and they're going to do a presentation, or it's kind of drop-in, drop-out?
Yeah, it's happening, you know, very fast, and we're doing our best to assist Caltrans with helping them put their best foot forward with presenting these plans to the public. Again, we just got them ourselves. I don't even think our contract city engineer has had a chance to take a look at them, but obviously recognize the importance of getting public input. We got the flyer earlier today, and my understanding is that Caltrans staff will be present. They'll do a very sort of brief overview of the project. In the email, they said maybe 10 minutes, leaving plenty of time for questions and answers.
So it's not a drop-in, drop-out? It's a show at 6:00?
It's not an open house type setup. I think if you want to see their initial presentation, you know, show up at, you know, right at 6:00.
A comment?
Yes, Matt.
If, just that, when you're having a public forum, it's really important, at least for me, because I read the Willets Weekly, it's my main source of local news, that it gets in by Monday for that week's edition. And if this is going to be on Tuesday and we didn't even know about it on Monday, it means the public, at least those who rely on Willets Weekly for a lot of news, might not get it, if they check websites or whatever, but it's just, it's, I think Caltrans should plan a little bit farther ahead if they actually want people to show up. Maybe they don't really want.
That may have been part of the conversation that happened in that coordinated meeting last week, yeah.
The good news is, it sounds like the city's going to hand deliver some invitations?
We're coordinating with the Chamber of Commerce.
The Chamber will hand deliver?
Yes, but we were able to get that flyer out to them today, as soon as we received it, literally, this turnaround to them. They are going to work with their membership and also some non-members. Hopefully, word of mouth, we're trying to get physical copies of the flyer out to businesses, get it posted.
And it doesn't just affect the businesses, although they're, you know, obviously very important to notify, but, you know, everybody who uses South Main Street is going to be affected by what they, what they're proposing.
Yes.
Which might actually increase the level of congestion on South Main Street, which has been a sore point for a long time.
Yeah, this is definitely a significant change. Anybody who looks at this flyer should look closely, because what Caltrans is proposing is a reduction from two lanes to one in each direction, northbound and southbound. The addition of bike lanes and one center turn lane. So it's a big difference to South Main Street, and people who are concerned and have questions should definitely plan to attend that meeting.
Also, is, this project is really a limited resurfacing, and it's essentially a paint job. So they're adding no other physical elements or structures to help calm traffic, to aid pedestrian crossings or intersections.
Right. They're just repainting?
Yeah.
Restriping.
Restriping?
Yes.
It's a restriping diet plan?
So basically, they're keeping the pavement with as-is. So you have four travel lanes and the center turn lane. They're condensing the four to one on either lane of travel and then installing a shoulder bike lane.
And a buffer?
Buffer.
Between the bike lane and?
But no physical separation.
No.
Between the bike lane and the through lane.
It's very similar to downtown, where you have that hatch?
Right. But it's not a physical buffer, it's not like?
It's not curb, it's not?
No curb, no, yeah.
I want to, there just more about the congestion comment. It was brought up from people that lived for a long time. Caltrans supports the idea of the congestion. Their goal is to slow vehicles down, so they are perfectly fine with the congestion. So just, just to, to know where they're coming from, they're okay with that.
The theory is a non- or a slow-moving vehicle is probably at a low risk of creating an incident or accident, but high body or injury count.
Must be driving that center left turn lane.
Or use the bike lane too. It's, we're not, we're not comfortable with this, and it was presented to us rather rapidly without a lot of input.
Sabrina? Can I ask a question, a technical question we really need to ask? Is there a, is there a law that says a speed has to be a certain limit if there's two lanes? Couldn't they just reduce the speed limit and keep it two lanes?
There's, there's some guidance, you know, I don't know law-wise, but there's some guidance with that. I think there's some important factors that Caltrans, that is Caltrans Road, and so we have limited authority to tell them what to do. We can suggest things. The other thing is, from my understanding of the city's overall goal, is this, this is a step in creating a more slow town feel to the south end of town. And it is pushed on us, we don't like that, that idea, but if we take a step back, it is going to slow traffic, it's going to make it more of a town-friendly feel, that it's not a highway going through town. And so we do, you know, it is part of our plan overall. It's not ideal, because they can't do, based on the funding, a lot more, they can't do any concrete work, they can't do any trenching or conduit for signs that would require electricity. So it's kind of a next, a next step, but.
Thank you.
I was just going to say, would it trigger a new speed survey and a circulation study? Because I know that a couple of streets are posted, no left turn, and people still keep turning left, and the problem is, when you have the two lanes and traffic's moving briskly, I see a lot of accidents happen that way. So there's a plus that may be, the problem is, we can hope they'll, you know, they'll slow down and won't turn left onto incoming traffic, but sometimes that happens.
Right. I don't, yeah, I don't, there's a question, the hope is that there, you won't be turning across two lanes of traffic, it's one lane now.
But I guess my question for, for staff and for, you know, for Caltrans is, is this going to trigger a new speed survey? Because they've, they've done a speed survey already based on what it's like, because it's considered the Highway 20 for them.
Right.
We look at it as our old 101, but we look at it as Highway 20. And there's actually a speed survey that's been done in the past, so.
Yeah. We ask, Dusty asked them to share any traffic studies that they have to support this, and they said, we don't, they have a memo, but they understand, their traffic engineers understand that this concept is going to reduce the speed of vehicles. That's their goal. So they don't feel the need to do a whole lot more in that regard.
I just would like to weigh in that while I typically am in favor of slowing traffic speed, I'm a cyclist and I'm always more comfortable when traffic is moving more slowly. I think the concern about that portion of town is there aren't any alternate routes for folks. You know, downtown, if you don't want to get stuck in this portion of Main Street, you have other options, but down there, there are none. So it's a little concerning to think that Caltrans is going to make this attempt with no, no backup for folks. Anyway, that's just my.
These are good comments to present at the public forum.
Yes, I know, I don't know why we're bending your ears.
My initial reaction was, oh no, I don't really want this. And then I thought, you know, our job is to stay open-minded.
Yes.
Go to the meeting, get the facts, and then, and then try to come to a decision whether we want to support or not.
I'm assuming they are going to keep the left turn onto Highway 20 separation there as you approach that intersection?
It'll, yeah, the intersection will be very similar to what it is currently, probably a bigger turn pocket into their, you'll still get in your own mind the turn.
Glad we had this little discussion and got the message out there and the concerns that the council has raised, the mirror or echo what staff has said as much to Caltrans. So we'll see what happens. You're going to have an audience with them at your 23rd meeting as well.
And can we get multiple copies of this from council members?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
We'll do that. So the last item, I just want to bring this up real quickly. We do have a department recommendation later on the agenda for the 2023 Underground Utilities Project. Once again, this is an extension of the conversation that we had last council session about our effort to reduce brownwater episodes and water quality, what staff does, what how staff responds, what are our ability to address concerns that residents and account holders experience. Scott Herman over at the Water Department found a very good document, and we tailored it to our needs, and I think there's copies before you. We're going to present them, they're at our counter, service counter, right now, we're going to make, get them out to members of the public who have concerns about just water quality in general. It has a lot of helpful information, it also explains the different type of, we have, you know, we get a lot of concerns, brownwater, well, it may not be brownwater as you envision it, it may not be sediments in the water main or the lateral that reaches your house, it may be another situation, it may be an internal situation, it may be a breaking, a breakdown of the valves or the plastic gaskets in your water lines. So there's a whole slew of options or scenarios that don't necessarily involve the city. And we're not negating that, we also value the opinions and thoughts of the property owners that experience this. This is kind of one of the tools that was discussed at the last Water, Wastewater Committee meeting, is how can we get better information? How can we inform the public? And this is one of those efforts, so. If you have questions, if you want to get copies of this as electronic or digital, and you want to get it out there to your friends and family, let us know.
This is great. Will this be posted on the city's website?
It should be.
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
That's what I have for tonight, so I think we can go on to Section 9, and Representative Associated with 8C Returns, we can just get through that, maybe that's maybe at the end of the meeting.
There will be extra copies of this at the?
Yes, there's copies right now.
Okay, great. Okay, thank you, Brian. So we'll put a pause and come back to item 8C, but for now, we'll move on to department recommendations. The first item before us is an informational discussion on Senate Bill 946, which is the Safe Sidewalk Vending Act. We'll be hearing from our newest code compliance officer, Philip Davidson.
I didn't recognize him, he cleans up.
Honorable mayor, council members, my name is Philip Davidson, I'm your newest code compliance officer. And I just put this report together to inform the council of the two new, or the two Senate bills, 946 and 972, and the way that they change the way the local government can regulate sidewalk vendors and peddlers. The bill decriminalizes sidewalk vending and restricts fines that may be administered by local enforcement. So the Senate Bill 946 was put into place in 2019, and according to SB 946, a sidewalk vendor is a person who sells food or merchandise on a sidewalk or pedestrian path. It does not apply to food trucks or anything with a motor. So it pretty much just sums up what local authorities can do and can't. So what we can do is we can limit the hours of operation, we can prohibit the stationary sidewalk vending in residential areas, but not mobile vendors. We can prohibit sidewalk vending, there's farmer's markets, swap meets, temporary special permit areas. We can require sanitary conditions, we can require vendors to comply with the American with Disabilities Act, so they can block the curb ramps or make the sidewalks inaccessible. We can require a permit or license, and we can request certain information about the business operation, like their name, mailing address, and type of sale. And that's what we can do, but what we can't do is we cannot require sidewalk vendors to operate in specific areas unless the local authorities restricting the vendor to protect the community's health, safety, and welfare. We cannot require vendors to ask permission from businesses or property owners other than us, so, like the city parks, we can, we'll get to that, but we can, we cannot prohibit sidewalk vendors from operating in public parks unless the park has a concession agreement or the park's restricting vending to protect the community's health, safety, and welfare. We cannot restrict the number of sidewalk vendors unless the city must restrict the number to protect the community's health, safety, and welfare. And that pretty much sums up Senate Bill 946. And that's one of the reasons we're seeing a lot more sidewalk vendors everywhere. And then Senate Bill 972, the enhancing safety. And then Senate Bill 972, the enhancing safety of sidewalk vending, was brought into place January 2023. So SB 972 revises certain equipment requirements, expands certain permitted food operation practices, streamlines permitting process for sidewalk food vending, and the operators of the commercial kitchen spaces that will be used to support sidewalk vendors. And it decriminalizes violations of Calcode by sidewalk food vending. So it replaces the existing penalties or just replace with fines. There's no more misdemeanors or anything like that. Now, what 972 does, it's, so it's two, it's new types of food facilities, compact mobile food operations, or CMFOs. And then one is a stand showcase rack or display that offers more than 25 square feet of prepackaged, non-potentially hazardous foods like chips, nuts, bottled drinks, or whole produce. Or it can be a push cart, pedal-driven cart, wagon, or a non-motorized conveyance may be approved for sale of prepackaged, potentially hazardous foods. Potentially hazardous foods are approved for limited food preparation. And then another thing it does is it expands the food vending opportunities in three ways. So it reduces the structure requirements for food carts. So they no longer require them to have the three sink compartments for the limited food preparation carts if the operation has enough spare utensils. And they must provide a space to separate their cleaning soil utensils. They cannot handle raw meats, chicken, or fish on site. But it also no, no longer requires a hot water heater. They still have to have the five gallon tank for hand washing, so they can be smaller. It allows for smaller cart size since no utensil washing sink or water heater is required. It allows for the use of auxiliary units to support hand washing and ware washing requirements for CMFOs that do not handle raw meat, poultry, or raw fish. It allows up to four carts to share an approved auxiliary washing station when operating from an approved fixed location. And with that, there must be a person responsible for the auxiliary unit that obtains a permit. And the site plan must accompany the permit application identifying the location of the auxiliary units. And it allows for local authorities to approve a model stand that complies with the standards of the California Retail Food Code. And let's see. Second thing it does to the food carts, it reduces the operational requirements for a food cart. So now it requires only a food handling card, not a food manager certification. And it expands what is allowed as a part of limited food preparations. So your hot, hots are 135 degrees, your cold's 41, and your cold holding require mechanical refrigeration. They can do reheating and cutting and slicing of produce of food that's for immediate service. And then the other thing it does, it allows for expanded cottage food operations, the Class B type. And the Class B, this type of CFO can sell home kitchen prepared foods directly to the public or indirectly through restaurants and food markets. A direct sale may be fulfilled in person via mail delivery or using any other third-party delivery service. An indirect sale may be fulfilled in person via mail delivery or third-party delivery service. The current gross annual sales for a Class B operation is $150,000. Now, all CFOs must meet requirements listed in California Health and Safety Codes, including but not limited to the following. Preparing and packaging foods from the approved food list, completing a cottage food operating training within three months of registering for the permit, implementing sanitary operations, labels compliant with state and federal requirements, operating within the established gross annual salary limits, registering or obtaining a permit from your local environmental health department. So that's the two new bills that are really going to affect us, I believe. As of right now, under the provisions set forth by SB 946 and 972, the city has limited ability to restrict or regulate sidewalk vendors. We pretty much have only one code that applies to them. And it just prohibited wear, and it states it is unlawful for any person to sell or offer the sales of merchandise of any description from either sanitary or portable stands or from vehicles upon either main or commercial streets or upon any side streets within a block distance from main or commercial. And the city groups, peddlers, and mobile food trucks in the one group.
Do you have some clarifying questions?
If I can answer you.
Okay, so if I'm a food, if I'm a vendor.
Yes.
And I'm on the sidewalk, according to these, this new law, I can go anywhere now within city limits?
Anywhere in the public right away.
Anywhere in the public.
And if you're mobile, you can also go into residential.
Okay. Well, if I'm a food truck and I want to park in a parking space, this does not apply to me, correct?
These have nothing to do with food trucks. Nothing with a motor.
I'm just trying to make sure that we're differentiating between the two.
Food trucks can still be within our boundaries to control it with our existing, existing codes, but I would recommend separating them two. Update the municipal code to differ, you know, define the difference between a sidewalk vendor and a mobile food truck, so they're not lumped together.
So can we expect that there'll be an updating ordinance in the coming weeks, months to, to be in compliance with these, these new laws? A revision to the ordinance? Or is it automatically? Sorry, go ahead.
Not weeks. That's, that's a tall order there. No, we are working. Dusty and I have had several conversations about how to address this. I have conveyed to community development that is the intent of the council to have a proposed ordinance regarding food trucks, mobile vending activities brought to you for your consideration, and that is something that is on our task list.
This is a separate item to address?
Yes, it's separate, but we're, we're looking at, that's a larger issue right now, this one. We're looking at how we can address, you know, reference the state statutes, where they basically, Phil did a very good job in illustrating what is, what we can and can't do, and how to address that to our local needs.
So in the meantime, will Dusty fall for the state? If you recall that for code?
Yes.
Well, I guess I'm confused still, too. With just the sidewalk vendor provisions that are in those new state laws, it sounds like they don't want us to be able to regulate or limit on Main Street, Main Street and Commercial Street, and yet our current regulation says no, no mobile vendors of any kind, whether it's motorized or not. And it's sort of, unless we can say it's threatening community health and safety, which is somewhat of a tall order, I don't know where we're going to get that justification. And it almost has a perverse effect if we say, none of them can be on Main or Commercial, but they're allowed everywhere else. I kind of think that's not.
Well, that was, that was why my response was tailored to that, that element, because that is kind of that cornerstone that we can't get our heads around on how to apply. Is it applied effectively? Is it, is it honest? Is it universally?
Does it make sense?
It makes sense. That is something we need to look at. You know, there's vendor, you know, there's essentially a food cart or a smaller type of operation. There are some ways you can regulate it. If that's the intent of the council, and I think this is what we're having this dialogue now, is it a problem in your eyes? We haven't received a lot of complaints from existing retail operators or anything like that, that, hey, there's someone parked up in front of my, my street, my storefront. Is this acceptable?
No, I haven't received any of them complaints. I receive a lot of questions on why it's allowed, in here and in the county, but the whole state's dealing with it, so.
So it would also be helpful to me just to get some examples in real life of what kinds of sidewalk vendors are we talking about? Because I don't see a whole bunch of them right now. I mean, it's not like they're all seven and a half, hundreds of them, but.
Can I ask a question, and maybe it's along the.
Yeah.
I noticed in Ucaya, you have the, I've seen some push carts.
Yes.
That have the hot dogs.
Yeah.
I've seen the push carts that have the ice cream. And I'm trying to think, and then the juice guys.
Juice, fruit.
Yeah, the fruit juice guys that are out there, and.
And we have a guy in Willets who pushes toys. He's got a cart with toys on it.
And so I guess, I guess the scenario would be, I plant myself in front of Elmech in the downtown with my hot dog cart.
Yep.
And Larry's next door to me with his ice cream cart. And Madge is there with her toy cart right on that stretch, and we get together and buy a wash station, one of those little plastic ones, and we, I guess we come to the city and say, we want to put our wash station here.
Yes.
I guess that's the scenario that we could be faced with.
Or that's for the stationary. I don't believe the mobile vendors even require that.
Yeah.
Mobile vendors can just move back and forth.
Yeah.
But honestly, Jerry, as a business owner, I'd support that. I've got a toy store. If somebody wants to come and set up their vending according to this law, I know that when, when there are micro businesses that are in front of your business, it actually, it draws people in and it enhances all business. The math, the statistics are there, and I think that's part of why the state is supporting it, so.
Oh, I guess the example would be, I guess, in your case, if I, if my selling, my little cart sells toys and plant myself in front of your.
I'm okay with that.
You are?
Yeah. No, I mean, in fact, I've been, I've been allowing the community to use my space for micro businesses once a month because I see value in that. So I'm just saying, as an individual council member or member of the business community, I agree with a lot of the support.
So essentially, you're asking for us to give direction, to update the code, to differentiate, first of all, between sidewalk vendors and food trucks?
Yes.
And then, second of all, to formulate an ordinance that will regulate the vendors that's in line with the new state laws?
Yes.
And so that we can strike the section that says we, we're telling them where they can be, which we're no longer allowed to do?
Yes.
Okay.
I guess I would just like to see a situation where we can't deny it, at least that there's a check, the box. So if I'm going to push my hot dog cart around, then I know I've got to go down to the county before we give them our permit, that they have to have a health certificate or something. I'm assuming that's still required, right?
I don't believe that is required for the mobile vendors.
So I can sell hot dogs without going to the health department?
Right.
Really?
Yeah, they only have to have a food handler card, not a food manager certification.
Correct.
They don't have to show social security, they don't have to show anything, just a mailing address.
Does that mean they are exempt from, from a business license as well?
You can.
I mean, it doesn't seem like it should be.
You can require a permit or a license.
Yeah.
I would.
I, from what I've read, because I've been reading quite a bit on this, like Santa Barbara, LA, they're unable to get ahead of it at the moment. And Sacramento, the biggest problems they're facing that is most concerning for them is the mobile vendors selling drugs and whatever in residential zones, because that's, mobile vendors can go into residential. Food traff, or human trafficking is one of the biggest concerns. And so that's the two, is the human trafficking and a mobile drug dealer. That they're, so just throwing it out there, that's what they're trying to get ahead of and unsuccessfully.
Let's be thankful we have toys and juice.
So I like the toys, but.
I guess I just want to see a process, so if someone comes in, it's not a big shock, or if the public says, hey, there's a guy selling juice in front of my business, you know, he's got a permit, we can't by law deny him, and this is an information sheet, and this is it, and we know who he is.
Yeah. I mean, so we, they can come to us and we can go ask them to leave private property, but we cannot demand that they, we can't put that into code that they have to ask permission.
Yeah.
So if I own a store and I go south for the winter or whatever, somebody wants to set up shop in my parking lot, there's nothing that they need to do for that.
Well, and the street right of way is not the private property, that's, that's public.
That's public, and they can do whatever they want on the public.
So there's.
As far as its safety issues. So another thing is, they're doing, is they restrict the sidewalks, so people end up walking into the bike lane, bikes end up going into the street where they cause accidents.
Okay, yeah.
And I think that's Santa Barbara's, one of Santa Barbara's biggest.
Clearly, that's an area that the city can't regulate, and if they have to not block any ADA.
Yeah.
The two things that are concerning, what I want to, what is my concern? One of them is about the potentially hazardous food items that are being sold. I was kind of like, what? You know, okay, if you're selling chips and juices that are in, you know, in sealed containers or whatever, okay. But if you're selling hot dogs and you're heating them there and you don't have any health requirements, I, I don't know how I feel. I don't feel so secure about that. That's one area. And what are the considered, the ones that were potentially not hazardous and those that are potentially hazardous concern me even more? The other thing that has really always bothered me is the commercial and Main Street, no mobile vendors of any sort being allowed, not only on those right of ways, but within one block of them, which can be, you know, 100 yards, can be quite a, in some cases, those blocks are really large.
Yeah.
And I don't know that, that I agree with that policy. I don't know what the justification for it really is, especially if we're essentially being told that we need to allow these, these kinds of sidewalk vendors. I don't feel like we, that we're on firm ground with what our current regulation is and take that into account when we're proposing a change in it. And it's a complicated, you know.
Oh, it is.
A complicated area. I hope we can make sense of it, that's all. Those are my concerns.
Any other comments from council? Questions for?
I guess I would just like to see at some point a presentation for the chamber folks so that they're aware that, I think sometimes what happens in a small town is people go, why is the city allowing this to happen? I think they need to understand that this came from Sacramento.
Yes, that is, that's the way they understand it now, so, because it's us, not Sacramento. It's county, not Sacramento. Hopefully, this shines a little light on it.
We lost local control, or this is what it sounds like.
Are we all comfortable giving direction to update the code, to differentiate between vendors and mobile food trucks, and to direct staff to create a new ordinance stipulating that sidewalk vendors can, or have to be in compliance with the state law?
Do you have consensus?
Okay. Thank you so much for the question.
Thank you. Thank you, Phil.
All right. The next department recommendation is a resolution to authorize the advertisement of the Steelwater Main Line Replacement Project, aka Brownwater Abatement. We will hear from our Services and Facilities Director, Olivia Brock.
Hello, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers. Brian kind of already did my job and told you about the project, but I'll tell you a little bit more. This project has at least three names, unfortunately, but I would like it to become the Steel, Steelwater Main Replacement Project. It is basically six locations, it's technically seven, and they're listed there, West Van Lane, East Van Lane, Meyer Lane. Lane, East Van Lane, Meyer Lane, Magnolia, North and Madrone Street. The seventh location is the water crossing at the East Commercial Bridge down the way. It's just under 1,900 linear feet of steel pipe that's going to be replaced with PVC. There is a small caveat, if you guys look close, there is going to be some steel line put back. That's by regulation, there has to be steel line across the bridge for the string, so there'll be some new steel line, not all replaced. We currently have 95% plans that our staff is reviewing with intent that this project will go to bid if it's authorized for advertisement and construction in the fall. This project was kind of pushed forward as part of the brownwater abatement overall program. It incorporates two of the CIP projects, the North Street Water Main Replacement and Madrone Water Main Replacement. It's wrapped into it. We anticipate it will be categorically exempt from CEQA. The estimated, it's a rough estimate, but right now, we're at $969,000, all paid from the Water Enterprise Fund. And I'm happy to answer any other questions that you guys have.
What was that price tag again?
$969,000.
I thought I heard.
Brian didn't like my $1 million comment, so we will them down and talk to council too.
I think I'm just looking forward to taking that next step and solving the portion of the brownwater issue.
This is, to our knowledge, all of the remaining steel line in town.
That you know of.
They keep making me say that, that we know of. Of course, with any of these projects, as you heard me say, there's three lanes associated, meaning very narrow streets. We will do our best, the residents will be notified, but it disrupts life for some people, and we understand that, but we make our best effort to accommodate those people in those streets. But there's several locations and several residents that will be highly impacted during the construction.
I had a local resident ask, with the city investing in trying to upgrade our pipes, do we have access or do we have any insight into possible access to any capital that homeowners would be able to access to upgrade pipes beneath their property? Are we aware of any type of grant or lending programs that are out there that the city could potentially facilitate?
I'm not personally aware of that, but we can ask some of our consultants that, that may have.
Yeah, because as we're discussing this need to upgrade, you'll ask, well, okay, so if it is, if I do have brownwater on my property, I can't afford to do anything about it, is there, do you have any thoughts or ideas? So, I said I would bring that before. From council, yes?
So, we're exploring and entering the contracts with our consultants to create the framework for our home rehab program. And one of the questions on eligibility is if there's an opportunity for them to make improvements to some of the, you know, piping. I don't know if this is eligible or not, but if it is, we'll.
I would just like to pony, piggyback on Suprina's comment, because I've also heard that from residents, that, you know, we have a lot of old housing stock in our community, and it's not just the city's infrastructure that's old, it's also private property owners. So, any help that we can offer would be appreciated.
If I may, I know from experience, some cities, it's almost like that sidewalk conversation. Does the city want to put funds together in a revolving loan fund or some type of program where you identify, you know, a cost share type of arrangement where certain lines are assessed, identified for age, decay, or suitability for replacement, and there's some cost share opportunity between the property owner and the city, because it does serve both interests? Outright funding to go to, directly to a property owner is very limited. It's using a cooperative effort.
Mary.
Does this mean that this is the end of the brownwater for all of us that has upgraded our homes and stuff with plastic pipe, that we'll never have brownwater again?
I'm not willing to tell you that.
I can't?
I'm not, I'm not willing to say never. Scott's not here, but I know it's a multifaceted issue, and it, this is one step in the direction. We have steel tanks, there's.
There's still sediment in the lines.
Sagging lines, you know, this is one step in the overall abatement process.
So, it's not a, I can't tell everybody in the city that you're never going to have brownwater again?
Correct.
Sorry.
Never say never.
Yeah.
I agree. Thank you.
But this addresses the concerns that the council has been raising and the public as well. We're making an investment in our infrastructure that's long overdue.
I think it's, definitely gives one pause to think about approving such a large ticket item, but in my four and a half years on council, the number one complaint that I have received from the public is about water, particularly about brownwater turbidity, and this is a step in the right direction. I think we've kicked the can as a city for a long time down the road, and I think this council is wise to stick our necks on the line and, and spend the money and help make improvements.
I agree. Really agree, because it's, yeah, I mean, that's what I get, that's why I have to go to the grocery store at 6 o'clock.
I think it is to be noted, I think Brian added the, man, he probably assisted, there's $5.8 million in the Water Enterprise Fund, and so I, I feel it's our duty to, to put it back into the community, and this is part of that.
Thank you.
More of a procedural question, do you see this going out to bid as one project, or do you see this going out to bid and potentially being broken up by a couple contractors?
This will all be one project.
Okay.
That reminds me, I do have a question. It indicates that the project is anticipated for beginning construction in late fall. When Caltrans was here a few years ago working on Main Street, if it sprinkled, construction stopped for three days.
Correct.
So, when we say late fall, are we really thinking next spring? Just, just to be totally transparent, or do we really think construction will begin in the fall?
To be totally transparent, the goal is, is this is our priority project, and it, some contractors are okay to work when it sprinkles, some are not. So, this is the type of project where a little sprinkle isn't going to affect them, but through, as you've seen through these bid, advertisement bidding, things can get delayed past what we expect. It's our intention that this project will be built this calendar year in the fall. If it gets too close to the rainy season, we don't want a project when it's flooding or something, I will recommend that it's delayed for construction until next spring.
Okay. Thank you.
It's a possibility.
Would you delay the whole project?
Yes.
Or just a portion of the project?
I, I would prefer to delay the whole project, so it's, and, because they do it in stages, you know, they'll come in with the trench paving all at the end.
Okay.
So, it's potentially, we'll just have to see how.
It's more efficient to mobilize the contractor at once.
Okay. Makes sense.
Any other questions or comments from council? I'm going to open it up to the public. Has anyone out there any questions or comments about this giant infrastructure project? All right, hearing done, I'll bring it back up and enter the motion.
Council move.
A second.
Motion and a second. Dolores, may we have a roll call? Councilmember Strong?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Merrifield? Yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, council, on this project. Very important for us.
All right. We don't have any department monthly reports, those are presented at the second meeting of each month. I still don't see any members from the Sherwood Valley.
I would say move forward. I'm not sure there was an expectation that they would be here. I spoke with Mariah McGill, and she assured me that they wanted an opportunity to speak, and I just saw her at 5:30 this evening, and I'm not sure whether they're there.
Okay. All right, let's go back then to city managers' reports and do number C, or letter C, the resolution approving a non-binding memorandum of understanding.
Thank you. So, just as a follow-up, the tribe administrator was made aware of the events, this being presented to the council tonight. The documents were shared with them, the meeting time was noted as well. So, in our correspondence with the administrator, they're fully in support of the proposed non-binding MOU, memorandum of understanding, which would basically allow their, their organization to pursue federal funding and some other funding sources to do an infrastructure project and to support infrastructure, that would support residential development and potentially a community development, a community center-type project as well that they have on the, on the plan sets. We don't know full details, but we do know that the proposed infrastructure would help provide water to existing residential development, that it has some supply issues with both quantity and quality. They're using groundwater-based, I think, multiple wells or a centralized well that is not very effective. And then, if they can proceed with securing funding for additional housing, that's where the need is definitely going to come into it. So, right now, it's non-binding. This is an opportunity for the two entities, the tribe and the city of Willets, to develop a relationship. We already have one, but this one would be specific for the projects they have delineated.
Any questions or comments from council?
I would like to hear what the public has to say.
Okay. Any clarifying questions? Okay.
The existing residences are how many, and what is their proposed expansion plan?
Um, they're not, okay, the existing projects, I'm trying to look through my notes here.
They're the east side road.
The current facility, the current development has 15 units, and what they're looking to do is essentially on the other side of the road is put in another residential development. I do not know the density, that hasn't been delineated yet or defined. Basically, what they need to know is if the city would entertain a, at this point, a potential to provide them drinking water. Now, this is not having the council commit to the project, you can still back away at a later date, but once again, like was presented during the Pine Mountain Water Company Proposal, MOU, is that the city would also leverage funds through federal sources to upgrade our capacity, not only to provide this additional need, but also support the existing distribution system. So, it's not only supporting housing that is needed in this community, but also allows us to put investment opportunities back into our system to support the whole operation.
Are you, am I right in thinking that in working with the tribe, the city might find itself able to tap funds that wouldn't necessarily be available?
Correct.
From the federal government?
Correct.
Okay. That could help us increase capacity of our water distribution and water.
So, basically, yes, so if you think about the surface water treatment facility, we wouldn't put in a separate cell that would just produce water for their need. It would be a universal upgrade that would support capacity throughout the system.
So, there could be a potential that because of our, any collaboration that the city could undertake with the tribes, we might be able to tap funds to help us, for instance, dredge the dam, dredge the reservoirs so that we could increase, increase capacity there for service water storage?
Upgrade the filtering system.
Okay.
And that's the way when we had the, our, our ad hoc, that that was kind of explained there, that that was one possibility that this could do.
Any other clarifying questions from council?
Did we ask the?
No, I'm just making sure that council's questions about what the proposal is are answered first.
No, I, I understand it, believe me.
Everybody good?
Yeah, just that there was one more point, and that that was that there was also the potential to add, in their plan, some kind of a park facility?
No, it says that it's a.
That has not been presented to the city. They're still trying to put that together.
That's still outside of, okay. That was, okay, that, my recollection's from a conversation, okay.
Well, I think what you're talking about is, they were talking about if they did do the housing, it would also include some sort of public meeting space slash.
When I, when I, when I spoke to them myself, they discussed that in their grander plans, that they would put in a recreation facility.
Yeah.
Park and soccer ball field, not just like a recreation center, but a little bit more expansive, similar to the park across the street.
I think they call it a community center is what I think that was presented.
Yeah, but it would, it would do many things.
It says community center in this, in the agenda.
That's what, what was presented to staff and also at the Water, Waterways, Water Committee.
Okay. I'm just thinking of the overall benefits to the community of Willets and water customers, so.
All right. All right, if council has had all of their questions answered, I'm going to open it up to the public. All right, anybody out there have comments or questions about this non-binding memorandum of understanding between the city and the Sherwood Valley Band of Indians? Virginia, please come to the podium and introduce yourself.
Seems odd being on this side of that counter. I'm Virginia Stransky, my husband's Larry. I have been on the city council, I was two terms and finally retired because my life was getting to be too much, but we've gone through this water thing so many times. I am a gardener, and it takes a lot of water to keep things growing, and I don't feel we're out of the drought. I don't believe in kicking the can down the road, but I think this is kind of a foot in the door situation. We need to be upgrading our community, and we're talking about doing the water now, and I know we need more housing, and we've talked about that, and with our restraining from the county not to expend our sphere of influence, we haven't built out as we possibly should have and could have. A lot of people have left the community, in my understanding, because they don't have the better quality of life. And in my opinion also, which is my opinion, my husband and I are both very politically outspoken, but we speak from different sides of the bench. Sometimes this is totally my opinion. I just feel that at this point in time, it's a foot in the door, and I'd like to see the council, like I say, not kick the can down the road, but I'd like to give us a little more time of growing and getting on with this water program. Thank you.
Would anybody else from the public like to speak to this issue? All right, hearing done, I'm going to bring it back up to the dais. Madge?
A comment. We are right in the middle of our main use element planning and being aware of the limit on how much water we currently have available to us to work with and wanting to provide more housing. Is it, is it the right time to put a foot in the door to another proposal that might want to use some of our water, even if it does maybe open the door to, to developing more water resources as well? I'm just wondering about the timing of it, whether it would be better to consider this after we had kind of looked at the whole main use element and constraints and what the city's proposing for the city.
Could I, could I ask you a question? So, some people have asked about the time.
So some people have asked about the timing of drilling a well back when we probably, in some people's mind, couldn't afford to drill a well. And yet the city invested back then and had the wisdom and the foresight to think forward. And thank goodness that they did. And so sometimes I think that you have to take a calculated risk. I had the same thoughts as you when I first heard about this and I had hesitation. And the last time this was before council, you weren't here, but I wasn't comfortable voting on the issue because I didn't feel fully informed. But after really thinking about it, talking to members of the community, within the tribal community, and then just the, I mean, ultimately, we want the people to have more access to housing, correct? And so it's, you can't get too hung up on like the boundary lines necessarily of, you know, you work here, you live here, we're all part of one community. So I think that keeping that in mind, that was important for me and trying to weigh out some of the questions that I'm sure that you're probably thinking about too. And then you already mentioned the part about it is increasing our infrastruc-- it has the potential to increase our infrastructure. Anything that our neighbors can bring to the table that benefits our community benefits us all overall.
Yeah, I think that is a perfect counterargument to the one that I raised. But it does sort of, it just feels a little bit disjointed because we're really talking about a few months, another maybe six months before the land use element is ready for us to dive into and approve and all that. So it's not a kicking the can down years down the road. So anyway, I guess I, because it's non-binding and we don't know what the potential benefits could also derive from the study, the MOU, I guess I can vote yes on it, but my concern is to make sure that we aren't overcommitting the limited water resources that we now have and how that's going to affect our land use planning.
Good point.
I'm opposed to it still. And there's no way that the water we have now, other than in the dam, can go up to this project at all because there's no facility that we have had and have anticipated to send the water back up the hill to the elevation that this is. So that's going to cost us some money to do that or a grant or whatever that people are talking about. So they're going to get the water before the city gets the water, okay? Why don't you remember that? And there's, there's other people that are on the city water also. When Horne owned this many years ago before the city bought it, he sold different rights for people out in the valley and they have it. We took a lot of stuff, or maybe you guys didn't, but I did. And that's when I learned you go to Safeway at seven. And then it's, I just think it's a bad deal. And once you let people in, and I also remember that back when we first, the first Indian tribe that, or just tribe is the way they want to be referred to, is that we could not do anything other than just deliver the water and the only thing that could come into the area was the fire department. And that's the way it was. And they're a sovereign nation and which means that any law that we have does not bind them to anything. And I have fact here and I know somebody that knows that because that's what happened. And so that could happen again and you have to remember that, okay? Also, another thing is that if they're going to build these houses and the community center, once they get the water, all they have to do is just keep getting the water. They can expand to whatever they want to expand to because you can't control what they're going to do. And you have to remember that also. We have gone through a lot of stuff as a city to put up the underground water and all facilities that, that we have done to get this up to where it is right now. And the one reason that I have pushed for the underground water or the groundwater was to make us water-sufficient in case of a drought. And we've had times when we've had droughts for a long time. And we've had, you know, people have done different things and I used to have to take my shower out in the yard to water the yard and bathe out in the yard with a bathing suit on. And I wouldn't embarrass Virginia and my family in that way, but anyhow, I'm just saying that there's, you can't believe if you haven't lived in the community when you have no water and you, it's just a really hard thing to do. And I think if we go for this, you guys better start shopping in Ukiah or at 6 o'clock at Safeway because the city is, people in the community are going to be really hot. Because I have mentioned it to four or five people that I know personally and they come unscrewed because they have no idea that this is going to happen. And so I just think that you people ought to know all of this and this is my feeling and I'm definitely a no on this. And I'm probably going to be the only one. It's a four to one again, so I did have one person last time that was voted with me, but maybe not this year. Anyhow, thank you very much for the time.
Well, I, I think that anytime we're up here discussing an issue, I want to know why somebody else thinks differently or if I don't have all the information, I want to get more information. And I do feel like Larry, that last time I didn't have all the information and I hadn't talked to enough people. And since then, I have kind of taken the pulse of many people in the community and I, although they've raised some questions and concerns, I haven't had the experience where they were angry or that sort of thing, fortunately for me. I did want to ask some clarifying questions though based on, on two concerns that you raised. One was that you had said that you are concerned about the MOU not being able to limit the connections. And maybe city manager could elaborate on that. If we, if we moved into an agreement with them, would we have the ability to limit the number of connections?
Help me out here. How do you mean, direct connections or EDUs? I mean, you know, it's a little bit of difference. The density of the number of units, housing units out there or how many, the capacity?
Either one, just explain that to us.
It's a little hard for me to explain because once again, the project is at the early initial stages. The intent here is not to put too many hard boundaries on it right now. We would like the tribe to come forward with their proposal. Their proposal is based on a lot of funding sources, so they have to make sure all the pieces fall together for them and then they can determine what scale their project's going to be. Getting back to your original question about would we limit them, I would say no at this point, but we would be concerned that if they're going to put in 100 EDUs, that we would be concerned. We would have to size our system accordingly. But this is where it's important to understand. If the council approves this MOU tonight, there will be subsequent discussions about the actual capacity and number of units that we would service. That would come later. You would have the opportunity to say yes, no, and proceed.
So you're telling me then that there would be an opportunity in the future to put limitations?
Okay. So let's just say there is a proposal to put in 100, service-free, they require service for 100 EDUs, right? To do that, and our system may need an upgrade of, I'm just picking a number out, $2 million. Let's just say that the funding opportunities that we were presented only would fund us to 100, 1.5 million. So at that time, staff would come to you and say, look, if we just utilize the money that's on the table that we can utilize without getting into our existing reserves or enterprise funds, we would cap the project at the capacity that would be funded through the 1.5 million, unless you want to use additional funds or go after our own grant opportunities.
So if they're not bringing any money to the table through any type of grant funding, do they still have access to water?
No, not as convenient and dependable as we could provide it.
I think that's what part of the study would also--
Yes.
--I had my hand up.
Yes, Larry has a question.
I said, and you people obviously don't understand, Brian, are they a sovereign nation or not? Yes or no?
Yes, they are. And, and I just want to take this opportunity to ensure that we have a respectful discussion.
I'm just saying--
This organization, the city of Willets, treats everyone fairly and equally. I just want to make that clear for the council and the general public.
Okay. Whatever you people want to think, I'm telling you that--
You're making uncomfortable with the you people comment. We're, we're all the people. It's not like you and, we're not against you. We're like all working together.
No, I'm just saying that it, it's totally different thing than what you're thinking. They have the right to do whatever they want to do. And we do not have any laws that can go into their place and tell them what to do. The federal government has told them that they're a sovereign nation and they're not bound by anything we do.
Sorry, Larry, I'd be in trouble too. I was just going to say that I think maybe that you're making an assumption that we don't understand what a sovereign nation is. I feel, I mean, I could be wrong, but I feel as if we do understand that. We're taking, we're taking all facts related to making this decision into consideration and, and just making our best judgment. You had one more point and that you had mentioned who gets the water first. Are you referring to the, I'm trying to understand, are you, is your concern that, that the surface water will go to a particular area of town before groundwater might get, you know, like, is your concern that people that are on the south end of town will get surface water if there's heavy water use and people on the north end of town will get groundwater? Is that the--
No.
Is that where you are coming from?
What I'm saying is, is when the water comes down from the dam, it's going to go by them first.
Okay.
They're going to take the water first and then it's going to come on into town.
So the water doesn't go directly to any one person's home? I'm confused because the water travels through the pipes and then people access--
If I may--
--the water, so we all have access to it. So I'm just trying to understand.
The comments that are being made are, is that, is essential, is essentially mechanics and gravity. They're the closest to the base of the dams.
Okay.
But they're not in direct connection, so we would have to extend a main supply line and there will be a diversion. So it's not going to be routed to them and then back to the city. There'll be the existing truck line to the city's distribution system and then there'll be a diversion.
Okay, that's what I thought, so I was confused.
So have your questions answered? So I'm a little confused too because in the staff report, it says that we're looking at the feasibility of the city providing potable water to 15 dwelling residential development and a proposed community center. So to me, that sounds like a defined project, 15 units, a community center. But you also seem to indicate that we don't really know what the defined project is yet. They haven't fully scoped it out. It could be more than 15, you even threw out 100 EDU units. And, and so I guess I'm starting to feel a little bit uncomfortable because I don't really know what the scope of the project is and the tribe isn't here to answer any questions.
The current, the current need as presented is to provide dependable, sufficient supply to the 15 housing units. They are at a deficit. Their existing onsite wells cannot meet their capacity. So they're looking at, and they apologize for its being misled or confusing, the initial need is for those 15 housing units. Those housing units exist.
So to give them backup and redundancy just like, or similar to the Pine--
So let's look at it this way. If they can get their, their first funding source will be at the lower end because they can get the money to put in the 15, you know, supply the 15 housing units, right? There, they have a plan and their plan was presented several years ago and they've been refining it about putting in a additional housing units, or additional housing units and a community center. That is right now conceptual. They have a desperate need for the 15 housing units to exist and they have been in place.
So if, if the council decides to approve a memorandum of understanding to explore the option of providing water for the existing 15 units, it does not mean that the council is opening the door to future usage if they wanted to build another housing development?
That's correct. You have the right to refuse.
Okay.
And I think that study, the way I understood it, would also give us and them an idea of whether we could handle more or that's it. Is that the way I understood it?
Okay. So let me back up a step for clarity. They receive, if the council approves this MOU, it goes into a grant applications. They grant funding agencies, okay, you have a relationship with this municipality that has, potentially has capacity to provide water to your projects. Box check. Let's see what the product, let's see what the feasibility costs are. The feasibility, it may be beyond the funding mechanism to put that water diversion line and supply even the existing 15. We're taking this incrementally at steps. I want the council to be assured that we're not going from this point here to a multiple housing unit that you're not going to be able to back out of. This is small steps. They need this to present to their funding sources that even, we don't even know the project's going to, engineeringally, pencil it.
Thank you. Madge?
I am really ambivalent about this because partly the timing issue that I already brought up about how it dovetails with what we're trying to plan within our existing city limits and possible extension, you know, close in. But it's also this foot-in-the-door question and providing safe and efficient water to 15 existing units doesn't sound like it's going to overtax our system, but it doesn't, we have no idea what, what the next foot in the door will be. And I am mindful of what Larry's pointing out is that we do not have any land use control over what they plan and we don't have, you know, they are a sovereign nation and they can plan whatever they want, but we do, we do have the power of the spigot essentially. We could say, after this MOU produces some kind of, you know, options for us, we could say, we will provide you X number of gallons per month or whatever it is and only that, you know, that's all. Because we can't tell them what to build on their own property, but we can say, we will only be able to provide you X amount of water.
Can we do that?
We have that authority, but it would be a real sticky situation.
You, the council, with guidance and recommendation from staff, would have to make some hard decisions and have known facts about your current capacity. You would have to demonstrate that the current capacity cannot legitimately supply that development at that scale and that's the reason why you're not playing favorites with the spigot. You're facing reality.
And which is why--
Hard facts can only carry, carry that capacity.
Part of why I think the timing does matter to me is that we don't really know what we're anticipating with our own land use element and zoning update. And I would rather look at that comprehensively than to have a foot in the door that might end up making our lives very hard, hard to make those decisions. I mean-- I mean, we do need housing for everybody and we need it, whether it's in the city limits or not in the city limits, but our first priority is to make sure that we have served our, our existing city residents who relying on the safety and volume of water that we can, can guarantee them. I, I guess I'm, I'm just, I'm open to this idea. I'm not real comfortable doing it without knowing more what their own range plans are and what our, our land use element plans are.
Can I add something to that?
Sure.
If the council approves the MOU and the tribe receives the funding for the feasibility study and engineering plans, part of that is going to be used to determine our capacity as well. So that's going to help us answer that question that you just posed.
Which is also part of the Pine Mountain MOU as well.
Yes.
Well, I hope they're all working together enough.
They're different time cycles and different funding sources. So we're trying to cover both.
The impression I got from what they presented was that I actually think that the tribe might have a better shot because they have more multiple avenues to pursue then. But again, these are grants that are out there and they're, they're going for them. I think the only reason, and again with the issues I've seen so far is it's a non-binding agreement. And that's the, that, kind of like you, you were saying, Matt, I think, that's the only comfort level I have at the moment that I don't think we've committed to anything. Because I do think Willets first, but.
Well, I'm going to end up deciding when Dolores calls me which way to move. But it is a tough call, but it is, I, I somewhat reassure it's non-binding. We can look at the facts and whatever comes out of this and say, we can't do it. You know, it's stretching us too far or it's too open. And, you know, we, but at this point it is not, we aren't committing to anything other than allowing the study to go forward. So, okay, just letting you know on that level.
Are we ready for public?
We asked the public and no one had any comments.
Oh, we've got some.
Let's open it up again to the public and if you would come here to the podium and identify yourself.
I am Robin Leeler and I'm a resident of the City of Willets. I want to thank you all for asking the hard questions and really struggling with this. It's refreshing to see. Now that I've heard about this, I'm saying, I'm thinking that we also need to go through another winter. This has been a pretty wet winter. Our water supplies seem solid now and a year from now, we could be in a drought again. And then I, I think we need to see more of a long-term pattern before we can start considering something like this. That's it.
Thank you. Anybody else out there have any comments about this enhanced discussion? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing portion, bring it back up to the dais. I'm wondering if, so last time around, when there were only four of us here, Matt wasn't present when this item initially came to us. Suprina abstained because she felt she did not have enough information. And so rather than, than potentially having ambivalent voting, I'm wondering if we should table this and ask the tribe to come to speak to us? Or if we should just make a vote tonight? How are the four of you feeling?
I'm prepared to make a motion to approve the MOU.
Okay.
I like your idea to table it, but that's partly.
I mean, I, you know, I, I feel like I don't, I, I'd like to just get to a decision, but I also am sensing, you know.
You know, the, the city has a law firm in Sacramento that we use on water issues, on complex water issues. It's the.
Andrew Ramos.
Yeah, Attorney Ramos is with the Chronic Law Firm. And they are specialists in legal matters regarding water. I think some of the questions we have about what would the city's ability be to limit the amount of water that we sell and so forth? I'd like to run that by them and have some firm understanding about that. And it's, it's, it's not just that we're providing also water to a neighboring city or community, but to a sovereign nation. And that further complicates the issue. And I think we ought to have answers to some of these questions that you're asking. And so putting it off to allow the tribe to come here and provide more detail about what their plans are and having the benefit of some specialized legal advice on these issues is probably a good idea.
Okay. All right, I'm going to propose tabling this for the future agenda. Do any of you support that?
I'll, I'll support it only because I'm a little disappointed the tribe didn't show up. You know, I was hoping that someone, the tribe or from the housing authority would show up just to kind of answer questions. I mean, to me, it's, it's non-binding and like, if it was called today, I could be in the position to vote out, but if it makes everybody more comfortable to wait.
I had the opportunity to reach out to the tribe and talk to them firsthand, so I'm not too concerned about additional information. I'm, I'll be honest, I'm a little concerned that we're talking about legal implications because now that's making me worry that like, this already came before council once and that wasn't raised. And then it's being raised tonight that we need more time to think about it. And I'm wondering like, if that is, is a reality and a concern, we shouldn't, we shouldn't be at this stage in the game if we're talking about that now.
Better mayor, may I explain? There is very clear differences between the two. So the other one, the Pine Mountain, they are at an existing infrastructure. They just, at this phase, they're looking at emergency tie. So that would just provide supplemental water to their existing system. This proposal, if we go through it, is looking at a dedicated system, continuous supply. Pine Mountain already has a existing infrastructure. They already have a utility in place.
All right, so as far as tabling, is two members approving that enough? Or do we need a consensus of the entire council? What, I don't know what the rules are.
Well, I would, I would suggest that if that's what your desire is or, or another member, then you make a motion to that effect.
I did.
Okay, all right.
There's a motion in the second.
I moved to table. Jerry seconded.
Okay.
Dolores, may we have a roll call on tabling this item?
Councilmember Strong?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Stransky?
No.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mayor Pine?
Yes, thank you. And I, I just want to say, I, I don't want anyone to feel that our time has been wasted. I appreciate the discussion. I think it's a very important decision and I look forward to having more information. And I really look forward to having the tribe present. I feel like we expect community members who have a permit come before us to show up and answer questions about their item. And I, I would, I would appreciate it if the tribe were here at the next go-round. So thank you, everyone, for your involvement and engagement. So that wrapped up city managers' section. We are now at city council announcements, communications and reports, item 11. Matt, have you any meeting tonight?
I do, yes. The two short items are that tomorrow morning will be a meeting of the San Sola Waste Management Authority and at 9 o'clock. And I will be here. The meeting will also be held in Ukiah and in Fort Greg. So if anyone wants to attend, they can come here at 9:00 in the morning. The agenda is short on details and I've complained to, to the administrator, which is the City of Ukiah, who is doing this, administering the contracts for solid waste management. And essentially, the, the service is now being provided by C and S and the City of Ukiah is administering it. But the board of MSWA is still overseeing all of that. And I'm, I'm hoping that we'll get a little more information at the meeting tomorrow and at future meetings because I feel like we aren't getting details either the budget or how the operation is going. The second short item is that EDFC, the Economic Development and Financing Corporation is meeting tomorrow at 2:00. And again, I will be here, either in one of these rooms, attending that meeting by Zoom. And that is continuing to do a very active loan program to local entrepreneurs and providing job opportunities through providing more, more money in our business community seems to be going smoothly. The longer item is Sonoma Clean Power. And I wrote up a little summary of the meeting that we had last, it was on August 3rd, just, you know, less than a week ago. As usual, there's a lot going on there. I could either, it's not terribly long. I can either read it or I could provide comment, copies to all the council members or any of the public that's interested. Maybe I won't read it, I'll just give you a couple of highlights. One is that the library here, our local library now has a climate corner and there's a lot of information about resources and they have a kit that you could take home and do kind of an energy audit. And we're the first library in Sonoma Clean Power Territory to have a climate corner, but they're going to be doing more of those. They've provided over 1,000 projects with incentive funding for energy efficiency and they're expecting a lot more money to come available at the beginning of '24 under the Inflation Reduction Act. The recent joint mailers, I don't know if everybody here gets these, but, page one and page two. I think these go out to all of the customers of PG&E and Sonoma Clean Power. They provide a rate comparison, how much you pay for the electricity. Sonoma Clean Power, the regular program is 4.5% lower than PG&E when you bundle all of, you know, all the costs. And the generation mix is also very interesting. That Sonoma Clean Power basically does not use natural gas at all. They don't use nuclear power at all. There's 1%, but that's because they are assigned some of PG&Es that they didn't want. But anyway, it's also, you know, basically a much more climate-friendly mix. I won't go into details, but if you're interested, I have a lot of information about that. They also announced that PG&E is stomping vegetation management, the enhanced vegetation management program that some of us recognized was cutting down huge swaths of trees around all of their, their power lines. They're stopping that, which is good, I think. But the bad news is that they're going to rely on something called, what was it called? Fast trip, which means that whenever the lines, their power lines, PG&E's lines, appear to be under stress or vulnerable, they just de-power them. The unfortunate part of that is it might, the, the good part is that avoid a fire, but the bad part is that customers get none of this and just suddenly their power's off. So the, Sonoma Clean Power and the whole CCA community, there's about 20, CCA stands for, I know this, I can't think of it right now. Basically, they're alternatives to the PG&E and the other investor-owned, like San Diego Power, you know, the, the investor-owned utilities had a monopoly for decades. There are now these CCAs which are public entities, they're nonprofit, and they have become a really strong advocate for consumers to try to make sure that we get the best, the best rates, but also more climate-friendly. So I think I'm going to leave it at that because it's getting long and this is a long meeting. But if you want, I will have this short summary available. Maybe I'll just make sure that Brian sends it to everybody.
Thank you, Matt. Suprina?
We had our land use meeting that Justin hosted. Matt and I were both in attendance. I was trying to think of highlights. I know it was just last week, I believe, but it seems like a lifetime ago. The thing that stood out for me the most was the, the collaboration of communication that was happening in the room. It was good that there were new people in the room that were basically sharing the same thoughts. So it felt good to know that we were all kind of on the same track and just really appreciated seeing new, new faces. I was Zooming before and getting to see people face to face and I thought it was, I feel like we're on track with that. Things looked good. You asked great questions. So, yeah. MTA, we have a meeting, or there is a meeting at MCOP on August 14th at 1:30 in the afternoon. You can Zoom in or you can appear in person. And this might be important for those who live in Brook Trails community because there was a mobility study. And there'll be a, probably a fairly lengthy discussion on what that study, what ideas they came up with and working in concert with MTA and members of the community and such to see what potential solutions there are. And I know that I serve on MTA board and we have been actively, been trying to think outside the box about ways that we can serve the Brook Trails community. I mean, there's communities to ourselves, but more specifically that relates to City of Willets would be the Brook Trails community, Leightonville and Covelo. So we're looking at a couple of different pilot programs that we might be able to start. And then we're looking at some different funding sources that we might be able to tap into. It's proving to be a little challenging, but we're, we've got our creative habits and we're lifting every rock and looking everywhere we can possibly think of in places where we were told that, you know, this was the amount of money that was available and you're not likely to get it. We're, we're going back and we're asking again, you know, for this year and this coming year. Has there been any increase in that funding source? Or is there any new criteria that would allow us to, to apply for more funding? We have some possible leads and we're a little bit excited about that and just working hard and, and that's all I have.
I did send you that feasibility study a couple days before it came out in the PACDAC, have you received it?
I did receive it. I appreciate it. And I got a copy from Loretta.
Good, I figured you'd need one extra time.
That's well, yeah. Okay, thank you. Much appreciated.
Larry, do you have any?
Nothing.
Okay, Jerry?
I had LAFCO on Monday. The only thing of real consequence is we approved the contract for our General Labor Council. Marsha Birch, who'd been filling in for the gentleman who's, I think, had some health problems. And we also approved a, I guess it'd be a on-call special legal services with Sloan, Sakai and Young as basically conflict counsel. And then I'm going to probably go into the Cal LAFCO conference in October. I was kind of on the back burner for that, but apparently someone dropped off. So they called me up today and said, are you game to go? I go, sure. I have, I have Biggest Cities meeting up in Fortuna on the 18th. And so I'll be heading up there for that. And so, and then you're all going to talk about it. I ran into Jerry Ward at the LAFCO and he said.
I had blissfully few meetings these last two weeks, other than my regular meetings with city manager. I did want to, I, we, I will be attending MCOP this coming Monday. And I did want to give an update to the council and the community regarding the Free Bulk Item Waste Day that was held at the Solid Waste Transfer Station this past Sunday. The event ran from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. It served 486 customers, 171 of whom were city residents. It was a successful event. They reached full tire capacity, I think shortly after 10:00 AM. So apparently we have a lot of tires in our community that need to be gotten rid of. Hopefully, the powers that be will. Hopefully, the powers that be will recognize that more such bulk item days will, will be in our future. Received comments from multiple community members who said the lines were long, but they were well organized, and they moved, so it was deeply appreciated by the community and obviously a success. I talked to the city manager, hoping that maybe the next time we look at our contract with solid waste Willets or city residents, we work more such days into the rotation for at least city residents, and Brian seemed that, seemed to think that that was a good, a good tack for us to take, so looking for more ways to enhance the service for our constituents, I think would be a good idea.
Good, I just want to point out that they did it in conjunction with Caltrans.
Yes.
And they had Caltrans personnel out on Highway 20 helping direct traffic, and they had a signboard out there.
I actually rode my bike over there on Sunday morning just to, you know, scope it out, and I have to say, it was pretty great cruising by all those stopped cars. Just the wind in my hair. I think-
Volcanic items on your bike.
No, I, I care nothing.
Just on that note, I just want to thank David Bowles' effort on, he was coordinating with Solid Waste and Jerry to make this happen. It was a long effort, starting, I think, in March. So, yes, we would like to do another event, maybe one that's more localized, that we can utilize City Cruise. That was originally the, the original proposal was utilizing City Cruise, but maybe we can revisit that for the spring, do like a spring cleanup.
I also think it would be something for the council to consider to possibly even writing a letter to the board of supervisors, just trying to enforce, impress upon them how much need there is, not only in our community, but in the surrounding communities that are part of the unincorporated areas. There's a lot of land in our county, and people pile it up, and if we don't want that stuff to end up in our creeks and along our roadways, we need to do a better job of solid waste management and options for especially our lower-income residents. So I think the county needs to hear that and needs to step it up so that we can offer better options to the people who live here.
I would support that directive to send a letter.
Yeah. Anybody else? I'm looking at you, sir.
I can see that.
Maybe it's something we can talk about with pass check, too.
Yes, department. Yes.
Well, that's a different subject, but it reminded me that the social services department in the county is going to be having a kind of a forum, talking about homelessness issues, and it's my impression that a lot of the resources that they have have been going to Ukiah and Fort Bragg and very, less focus on Willets, and the people that are homeless in Willets aren't able to go to Fort Bragg and Ukiah to get what they need for services. So I think, I'm sorry, I don't have the date in front of me. I'll send it to Brian, he can send it out to at least the council members, but it's going to be held by Zoom as well as in person in Ukiah, so we don't have to go to Ukiah to attend it, and I'd love to just have more voices to talk about the need to direct some of the resources. For example, a warming center this coming winter, which was sorely lacking last winter. Horrendous.
I think sometimes when we talk about homelessness, we think about people who live on the streets, and we need to remember that homelessness is about people who don't have a consistent home. There's lots of people that are homeless that go from home to home. They live one night here, then one week here. There's multiple families in one house, and that was something that, to be honest, when we were talking about the MOU and the need for housing, I was thinking about, you know, we're talking about, you know, people, that we should focus on the people within the city of Willets, but many of those people, they're living in homes within the city of Willets, and they're homeless, and they need a place to live, and they need to be thought of in all facets of our planning and thinking. So just, just a thought to tag on to that.
So is that okay to have Brian send out the, the date that that forum will take place?
Yep.
Thank you. All right. Do we have any good welfare? If nobody has anything, I would just like to thank Dolores and Kathy and Brian and anyone else who was involved in thinking of me and my family during our difficult weeks, so thank you for your help and mental life. And we have no closed session, so at 8:45, I call this meeting.